August the 11th, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone who's in attendance and our audience this evening, and those who are joining us by media and other means. And so, welcome to the Caldwell County Commissioners Meeting. We don't have any public comment tonight. No one has signed up for that. So, we'll have our invocation, and we've got Discipleship Pastor Kevin Burns from Waterlife Church with us this evening. So, Kevin, if you'll come up and have your invocation, we'll follow that with our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Patrick Storr. So, welcome tonight, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let's pray. Father God, we do thank you for this day. God, for this is the day you have made, we will rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for your many blessings. God, how good you are to us. God, opportunities even that we've seen in this day. As we come to a close of the day, God, we've seen opportunities to be aware of you and your goodness all around us. Opportunities just shine as lights for you. God, opportunities to see that you are in full control in every way. God, we thank you that you are sovereign in every way. God, with a plan and purpose for each of us on this day. God, we thank you for what you're doing in this community. God, we thank you for our elected officials. God, again, we know that they are elected and you are in control. And God, we thank you and we pray for them. God, for you say in your word that if we lack wisdom, we ask of you. God, for again, God, we pray for each and every one of them. We pray for their families. We pray for their leadership. God, we pray that you'd give them wisdom from on high. God, for as this country was founded upon you, God, we pray that you'd just give them wisdom to lead and guide as you would have them to do so. God, I pray that you just bless this meeting. God, I pray that you just guide every person that speaks. God, I pray that you just guide the decisions that are made. God, I pray that you just please just help us to honor you and exalt you in everything that we do and say. God, again, thank you for your blessings. God, as we think about your blessings, God, we thank you for the ultimate blessing that you gave us where love was displayed on the cross, where you sent Jesus Christ to pay the penalty and die for our sins. God bless this meeting and bless these officials and continue to work in this county, and we'll praise you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of items to add to the agenda this evening. First would be an item 24, which is to amend the opioid fund expenditure resolution, correcting the start date to July 1st, 2025. Second would be an item 25, budget revision, acceptance of grant funding from the Governor's Crime Commission for our Sheriff's Department. The board authorized the applying for this grant back in February. We've been awarded the grant, so now we need the acceptance of the grant funding so those funds can be used. And then item 26, a budget revision for rollover of strap grant funding for the Happy Valley Stream Restoration Project, 100% grant funded. And then an item 27, which revised the board meeting dates for the remainder of this calendar year. And I think you have those dates in front of you there. So, those are the agenda amendments for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, here in our interim county manager, Mr. Wayne Rasch, and the presentation of our agenda, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting that this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the interim county manager has presented.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, and that motion carries. And that brings us to our first item. However, do we want to read a statement into the minutes to be read in? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. That's okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Per the advice of our county attorney, we wanted to read a statement in concerning last month's tax settlement, item number six on the agenda. A list of a person's owning real property whose taxes for the preceding year remain unpaid is available in the Caldwell County Tax Department. And we wanted to get that in the record in the minutes for this meeting.
Making publication that that is available. So, thank you, Mr. Attorney, for catching that for us. All right. So, that brings us then to our recognitions this evening. And we have Irv Erto with us from Post 29, and I think some others maybe. But Chief Trevor Key as well is coming up tonight in our recognition of EMT of the Year. So, welcome, Irv.
I'm Irv Erto. I'm the post historian for Geiser Kendall American Legion, Post 29. We have some other members here. Our post commissioner, yeah, yeah, he's the chief.
Commander.
Commander. That's the word. I hate that word. And Wes Wildge. And then I have, we have our past commander, Joe Osborne, back there. And our member in large, large member, and Mike Mazek. And he was previously a past, yeah, anyway. I'd like to thank the county commissioners for allowing us to be part of this, a small part of this recognition of outstanding first responders in Caldwell County. We don't make the selection. The candidates are selected by the department heads or they're designees. And that certainly is a difficult job to choose one from so many. But the county is blessed to have so many who, when trouble comes, they go towards it. And we go the other way. And part of why we do this is to create an awareness in the community of the quality of our first responders, and we have so many of them. So, we're going to recognize one from the sheriff's office, and another one's going to be from the EMS. So, we have Trevor come up and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This evening, we're going to recognize a young gentleman that has done quite a bit in his small tenure here at Caldwell County. Zach Bumgarner joined Caldwell County in 2022, same year he started his EMT. He's volunteered with a couple of the county fire departments in a volunteer and a paid position. In 2024, he obtained his paramedic. With that, he went straight from EMT, straight to paramedic, and has done a lot in a short time. Since then, he's helped with our recruitment campaigns, and he is gung ho and ready to get out there and recruit for us. Like I said, Zach's a very valuable member of our organization, and we look forward to many more years with him. And he was also this year, in May of every year, which is EMS Week, the peers from Caldwell County EMS vote on Paramedic of the Year, Rookie of the Year. This year, he was nominated by his peers as the Caldwell County Paramedic of the Year.
Hold on. Trevor, before you leave, I want you to do one more thing.
Okay.
And of course, Zach, we'd like to give you an opportunity to get any other pictures up here that you'd like to have, and/or if you want to say something, that's certainly permitted too.
Thank you.
But I think you have maybe some of your family with you that know if you wanted to get their picture tonight. And it is pretty special to be recognized and... Trevor, I was going to come back. So, you mentioned recruitment, and I thought it might be a good opportunity for you to mention what you've got coming up this week in open house, I think, and recruitment for EMS. And so...
Wednesday, August the 13th, at our Lower Creek Base, we're having a recruitment open house to come and show our equipment, our personnel, training, 1:00 PM to around 5:00 or 6:00. And anybody that wants to come, feel free to come by. And like I said, we're looking to recruit in our eight oncoming positions and hopefully some more, more part-time.
And you're taking applications that day?
We will, yeah, absolutely.
So, if you want to be a Caldwell County paramedic, be a great time to come and be a part of all that's going on.
And even if you're not an EMT or paramedic, we'll answer your questions.
If you think you want to be, it would be a great time to come.
We'll get you from point A to point B.
That's right. So, thank you. And I think next will be our Deputy of the Year, and Sheriff Kevin Bean's with us this evening. So, Sheriff, if you'll come on too. He's looking distinguished tonight, too, the sheriff is, so...
His automaton is right around the corner. Evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Speaker, County Manager. Each year, I'm contacted by Post 29 American Legion to nominate a Deputy of the Year on top of our Deputy of the Year that we usually nominate at our Christmas gathering. When you're blessed like I am with quality employees and stuff that this county has, it's hard to pick an Employee of the Year. They all deserve it. But this year, we picked Jacob Britt. He started with us in 2016 as a detention officer. He has moved his way up through the ranks through bailiff. He's worked on patrol. I've never had to complain on the man, never. He's always happy. I meet him every morning in the hall, and I'm there and he's there together. He's just one of those guys. Finally, he's wound up, he is one of my investigators now. And he is one of the best ones we've got. I'll be honest with you. He works his cases, he keeps his caseloads down, and I am very honored to present him with this award tonight.
Jacob, you have any family or...
Yes, sir. We've got my wife and my kids.
You want to bring them up and have a photo op? All right. You got any words of wisdom?
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask you to come back up, Sheriff. And I think we've got another recognition this evening for your Bailiff of the Year that was recognized as the top bailiff in the state of North Carolina.
Yes. Several months ago, I was approached by Eddie Caldwell. He's the Executive Vice President, General Counsel of North Carolina Sheriff's Association. And the North Carolina Chief Justice Commission on Professionalism awarded a Bailiff of the Year Award for all 100 counties in North Carolina that participated. So, he called me and asked me if we had anybody who wanted to nominate. So, I contacted Lieutenant Simmons at the courthouse, which knows the bailiffs intimately. And he said, yeah, we've got one up here we're going to nominate. His name's Frankie Holder. To know Frankie, you know he has a servant's heart. Frankie cares about people more than he does himself, and I'll get into that in just a minute. But in order to realize the process of this, the nominations went to a board that were non-biased, and out of all 100 counties that participated, Frankie come out on top. Now, before I go into the rest of my story about Frankie, I want everybody in this room to imagine you were just diagnosed with stage IV stomach cancer. Frankie went to his treatments. He went to his chemo, he went to his radiation, he went to his son's appointments, and still came to work. He was sick, he was hurting, but when his shift worked, he wanted to be there with him. And to know Frankie, you know he loves his family, because it don't take about five minutes to know every one of them and everything they do, what they do together, whether it be mowing the lawn, camping. And Frankie is just one of those gentlemen that there's no words to explain what he is to us. And he's still here working, and it's an honor for me. We didn't have another certificate for him or an award, but he brought the one that we presented him at the office. So, we're going to have a picture took with it, Frankie, if you'll come on up. If you want to bring your family with you, come on, bring them.
Yeah. We want our photo taken with him, too, can we, Sheriff?
You want to just get them all right here?
Yeah, we can get them. Let him get his right here in front to begin with, then we'll come down and we'll get over here out of his picture to begin with. He don't need my mug shot twice. All right. I know the sheriff mentioned what his job was as a bailiff, but you have to realize there's 100 counties and courthouses in the state of North Carolina that's running numerous bailiffs. And so, it's pretty high honor, and we appreciate everything he does. All right. That brings us to item four, and that is an item for decision on a rezoning from general business to light industrial. And Kim McGee's with us this evening. So, Kim, come on up and tell us a little bit about what we're doing.
Okay. All right. This evening, we've got a rezoning request for property located at 2881 Conley Springs Road from general business to light industrial. The owner and applicant is Raymond Dollar. And hold on just a minute. Find the arrows. Wait a minute. There we go. Okay, there they are. Sorry. Okay. All right, back on track. The owner and applicant is Raymond Dollar. The property is 10 acres, and like I said, it's currently zoned general business. It was rezoned last year from residential to general business and was approved back then. The property is in the protected area of the watershed, which limits the amount of impervious coverage to 36%, but they could also go as high as 70% with a special intensity allocation. But with 10 acres, an increase in coverage would probably not be necessary due to the fact that they could automatically cover up to three and a half acres by right. There's no flood plain or perennial streams on the property, so you wouldn't have to contend with any of those extra requirements. The property is vacant and heavily wooded. And here's an aerial of the property that shows the property outlined in blue there, and you can see that it's heavily wooded. And here's a picture of looking at the property. I was standing in the parking lot of the convenience center site, so you can see that it's got a big, heavy buffer of trees. The utilities servicing the property is Duke Energy, and it's also serviced by Septic and Whale. The environmental health inspectors have done the soil evaluation, but the permit is in the process of being issued, but they have to locate the site and make sure that they have the property staked off before they can actually issue the final permit on that. But the soils are good, and they won't have any problem working the septic system. The NC DOT latest traffic data shows an annual average of 10,500 vehicles per day. The surrounding zoning districts vary from general business, industrial, R-20, planned unit development, and RA-20, as you see on the slide there. There's all different types of businesses in the area, such as retail, service stations, manufacturing, restaurant, marinas, and the county's convenience center site, like I said, is directly across the road. And all those businesses are located within a half a mile of this property. The applicant is requesting this zoning change from general business to light industrial in order to allow for the potential sale to Dynastar Aerospace Machining. Dynastar uses CNC machining to manufacture parts for aerospace and medical and automotive industries, which that will be presented later after this presentation. The proposed business would fall into the light industrial zoning category, making this zoning district change necessary. However, when a rezoning takes place, state law requires the board consider all the uses that are within the zoning district that's being requested and their potential impact on the area. The permitted uses in the light industrial district are distribution facilities, warehousing, wholesale operations, trucking terminals, public works facilities, and solar farms. The request must also align with the county's comprehensive plan. And you'll see here on the future land use map, now that the lower section of that map on Conley Springs Road, it shows the commercial corridor node. And that's what was voted on by peers and adopted by the commissioners a few years ago. Commercial, the characteristic of a commercial corridor node has a wide variety of commercial and retail services, multifamily housing, professional offices, small-scale light manufacturing, warehousing, and managed access street connectivity. Proposed zoning districts in this commercial corridor node are medium-density residential, multifamily, general business, office and institutional, planned unit development, and light industrial. The property has direct access to Conley Springs Road, which leads directly to I-40, making this property attractive to industries. The planning board and staff reviewed the rezoning application's consistency with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, as well as the watershed ordinances. We also looked at the reasonableness of the request as it pertains to public health, safety, and general welfare. No evidence was presented that there would be a negative impact on the community, and the request is in line with the comprehensive plan. So, the planning board recommendation is approval of the consistency statement that was provided in your packets, followed by approval of the MAP amendment. The consistency statement that was provided is as follows. Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public's best interests because the amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan that contains a future land use map that aligns with the request by suggesting light industrial zoning for the aerial via a commercial corridor node. There's no evidence that the rezoning would negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties. And it can promote the public health, safety, and welfare by allowing the manufacturing of goods to the public as well as other businesses. The planning board's recommendation is also contingent on the NC DOT driveway permit and septic and well permit approvals. And to go further into the NC DOT approval, they have been in contact with NC DOT, and approval shouldn't be a problem, but they can't actually draw the permit until the ownership is taken by the potential business. I've also prepared an alternative statement of denial if the board so chooses. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions of Kim? I do have one. I don't know that you've covered it very well, but I think early on, there were some issues with perhaps having water there, but you're saying they can drill a well on the property?
Yes. The amount of water that they need is just for their restrooms and probably water fountains. The water that they'll be using for the CNC machining is brought in by delivery companies, and that water does not go into the septic system. So, really, just a regular-sized well would be sufficient for what's being proposed.
So, and I guess this may be an attorney question, but I know we really don't consider what's going there in this rezoning, if that makes sense. It's rezoning to light industrial, but if we do this, Mr. Attorney, can just anybody then be able to build there even though they wouldn't have access to water if they'd have a well?
Well, if they meet all of the other requirements under the light industrial use, yes. And of course, you know, there are other issues like the water permits and other things with DEQ that would have to be...
I'm specifically concerned about their fire protection. You know, sprinkler system, thinking that that's going to be an issue for not having municipal water hookup, but I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, they would have to meet any sort of rule or regulation period to order to build. But yeah, I mean, anyone can build as long as they...
They wouldn't get a waiver by that just because we've approved it as light industrial.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, this is just for zoning purposes, just what they can do there under the zoning amendment. But obviously, all the other laws and ordinances and rules apply to them as well.
Right. Very well. North Carolina Building Code would apply.
Yeah. No doubt.
All right. Is anybody here with the Dollar family? Any of those folks come tonight?
No, they're not here. I've also had no phone calls with concerns or any kind of interest in this...
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and get that on the matter of record that it's open. We did have a sign-up sheet tonight for anyone, and no one has signed up to speak either for or against this zoning. So, I will close the public hearing. And I guess I ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting this and/or if you have any more questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt as... Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we uh adopt uh as presented tonight.
All right. Is there a statement that needs to be read?
Uh, yes, the consistency statement.
Does somebody have a copy of that one? I know we usually are reading that in for a matter of of our minutes, so.
Is that the one you read earlier?
Yes, it is.
Does it have to be read again if she read it already?
I'll just make a motion as she has presented.
All right, as she read the statement in contingency state. Yes. All right, we can do that. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Good job, by the way.
Thank you.
That might have been your first public hearing with us. I know you've probably done it in the past, but.
At least ten years.
Yes, ma'am. Well, you've done well. Thank you. And that brings us to item five on our agenda, which is an economic development uh for Project SpaceX. And Jesse Trivitz with us uh this evening from our EDC. And uh so you have an opening statement or anything you'd like to present?
I do, sir. Good evening, Chairman Church, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to present three new projects that we have for economic development here in Caldwell County. I do want to take just a second, if I may, to to remind everyone that's here of what economic act economic development actually does for our county. First and foremost, we want to improve the economic consistency within our county. So by um improving well-being, quality of life, we do this by increasing the number of jobs, increasing our taxable property, reducing poverty, and fostering innovation. We love to do this for our county, so we love to do that for our people in our county. We use a multifaceted approach which involves several different things. But a few of these is diversifying economic base, strengthening infrastructure, and helping our communities withstand economic downturns. We also like to create a resilient economy. By diversifying the economic base and strengthening our infrastructures, this helps communities withstand these economic downturns that we've experienced in the past. So diversification is number one on our priority list. We used to be furniture. We are far, far more than furniture. However, I do want to add, we still create some of the most beautiful furniture in the world right here in Caldwell County. Finally, we seek to expand our tax revenue by recruiting new businesses, growing existing ones, and contributing that to the tax base. These additional tax revenues go directly to support schools, police, EMT, everything that our counties uh our county provides to our citizens in here in North Carolina. So thank you guys so much for allowing us to come. And uh we would like to uh pre- ask for your support for these uh development initiatives that we're about to present.
All right, so with that, I'd like to just tap into that and and say thank you to our EDC for everything you guys are doing over there. Uh, we've come under uh quite a bit of scrutiny lately, saying that we're just kind of a bunch of group of people that don't care about Caldwell County. We don't do anything, bring business in, and all those things that are going on. And I just want to openly say that that's uh not true. We're actively pursuing at every turn to bring business into Caldwell County. Uh, our demographics probably dictate a whole lot of what we can bring in and how it operates. But uh we stand willing and ready uh to bring new business into Caldwell County and support the business that's already here. And we've got a a host of that tonight uh just within these three economic development uh projects. And so I think this board has done a a great job over the past, and uh and we continue to do that. And uh so I I just wanted to say that openly tonight uh during this meeting. And so I'll open the public hearing uh on the economic development for Project SpaceX. And again, we had a sheet to sign uh up tonight if you'd like to either speak for or against this project. Uh, but we didn't have anyone sign up. So Jesse, would you like to present us what we're trying to do with Project SpaceX?
I certainly would, sir. And we do have two um members of SpaceX here, Project SpaceX with here with us today. So if you have any questions, we would be happy to come up and answer any of those toward the end.
Can we get them to come up anyway so we can just put a face with who they are? And uh that way we.
So Mr. Jerry Suits, young man first, and then Robert Milton would be our second gentleman in line.
And Collins was native there, I think. Thank you for being here tonight. So uh go ahead, Jesse.
So, gentlemen, Project SpaceX Caldwell County Economic Development respectfully presents a proposal of a tax agreement between Caldwell County and Dynastar Aerospace Machining, a precision manufacturing company with planned operations right here in Caldwell County. As you mentioned before, one of your goals and one of your charges to us was to bring in as much new business as possible. This will represent our first new business here in Caldwell County that we're asking for in quite a long time. This agreement is submitted under the authority of North Carolina General Statute one fifty-eight dash seven dot one, which permits counties to offer performance-based economic development incentives to encourage capital investment, job creation, and growth in the local tax base. This project has been reviewed and approved or recommended for approval by our Economic Development Advisory Committee Board. Dynastar has communicated its intent to invest approximately four point four million dollars in Caldwell County. This investment includes the purchase of real estate, which was just rezoned. Thank you so much for that. Uh, construction of a new facility, the installation of new equipment and machinery. These investments will enhance the production and capabilities established and establish a long-term presence here in Caldwell County's manufacturing sector. Dynastar is also committed to hiring five full-time positions within the first year. Uh, over the next three to five years, the company plans to create approximately thirty to forty jobs with an average annual salary of sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, as a point of reference, that is thirty percent more than our current average private sector wage here in Caldwell County. So that is really important for us as part of what economic development does. We are also trying to raise the standard of all of our citizens here in Caldwell County. We can best do that by raising our average annual income to each com- uh each member of our community. Dynastar also plans in the future to expand the initial building footprint by an additional fifteen to thirty thousand square feet. In recognition of this investment and planned growth, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, along with staff, recommend offering a tax grant equal to fifty percent of the county property taxes paid on the increased net taxable real estate improvements and equipment. This grant will be awarded annually for three consecutive years, beginning with a tax year of Dynastar's choosing, but no later than the year December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. As with other economic development agreements here in Caldwell County, this in grant, this grant involves no upfront funds. That is very important for, I think, our constituents to understand. This is a reimbursement grant, so that means unless they perform and say what they do, they don't get any money. So that money stays right here with Caldwell County. Uh, we are excited to support this project, which aligns with the county's strategic goals for industrial development, tax-based diversification, and long-term economic competitiveness. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
I I will add to that, that uh this funding uh stream on the tax uh grant or any other incentives comes out of the sales tax reinvestment fund that we have uh set up. And so just to mention that as well, so.
Jesse, I thought we uh spoke about changing our uh process of tax incentive as going to a stagger, staggering the years uh with the percentages like we're doing in the third project coming up. This one is a flat.
This is a flat, which was appro- which was discussed as a flat. For this project alone, each project that we uh we're going to ask for your opinions on each of the projects, this project was discussed as a flat three-year fifty percent grant.
And we discussed that in a clo- that closed session?
Yes, sir.
Because I, to be honest with you, I I couldn't remember. And my my thought is that we're going to a staggered.
Well, each each through each project, you will have an option to either do staggered um s- a stationary, which would stay basically the same rate. For this particular project, it was discussed that it would be the three-year fifty percent.
And why 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 does it meet that?
So under the under the tax grant initiative that we kind of set up and and haven't fully approved for distribution yet, we had four uh five different stages. The first stage, which is what Dynastar qualifies for, which would be a minimum investment of a million dollars, it is a standard three-year fifty percent grant for that level. So the four, the level four that we had approved for the other project that we have coming up, we we changed those numbers and those numbers alone to be a more staggered for that particular project.
Okay. Because I couldn't, I, you know, well, I asked Abby for for notes and everything, and I I just, I and does anyone else have any comment or am I wrong or?
No, I mean, I think you're dead on because I know we talked about some of that in in what we're wanting to do going forward. Now, we don't have a job incentive attached to this.
With this one, no, sir. No, sir. This is strictly taxed.
All right. Anybody else? Are we good with that?
I I feel like they've already been presented that.
Yeah.
I mean, we're sort of. I mean, they've already agreed upon it. You know, they've they've already been presented that, particular one and.
And it's because of the level of investment that that we we're not staggering that.
Correct.
But if it's a higher level of investment as as project number three, then that's where we're getting into the staggering.
Yes, sir. That was your request. Yes, sir.
The only question I have is going back to Chairman Church's comment earlier regarding the um having the water pressure for the sprinkler system. Is that stuff y'all, that something y'all worked out?
Yes, sir. We've discussed that.
I'm sure you're aware of it, obviously.
Yes, sir.
You can't get water there.
Um, so the discussion revolved specifically around the amount of manufacturing space. It's going to be ten to twelve thousand, so it'll fall below the required minimum to have a sprinkler system. However, if in the future a sprinkler system is required, we've also discussed a gas system and a dry system, a dry chemical system as well. So they understand the repercussions of not being able to get water to the site, and that has been fully discussed with them.
Okay. Because a big enough line is probably never going to come that way.
No, sir. It's my understanding that it it cannot, we cannot tap into a thirty-inch line anymore. So it's it's going to be hard to get water to that location.
As bad as you want to.
I I just, I would like to take the opportunity to thank you guys for your willingness to invest here in Caldwell County. And um I know you have ties here, and it means a lot, um not only to to us, but to citizens here that to have local people uh create entrepreneurship and create businesses here. So thank you for your investment.
We're from here. We want to come home.
Yeah, that's what that's what I understand, so we appreciate you very much for your investment here.
Thank you.
All right. With all that, then I will close the public hearing portion and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting this economic proposal that's presented uh by Jesse on Project SpaceX.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the economic development for SpaceX as described by Jesse.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries you now. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we look forward to seeing the building going up soon.
Good luck to you. I don't live far front, but I'm looking forward to seeing it there.
I'm a poor neighbor, so.
Yes, sir. Well, thank y'all for being here tonight, too, and we appreciate it.
Welcome back home for a shorter drive.
Uh, next is an economic development uh incentive for Granite Falls Composites, so.
Yes, sir. At this time, um s- since we're like too many people, I would like to call Mr. Jamie Little and Ms. Melissa Curtis. They are the ones that are making this conversion from Roblon to Granite Falls Composites Possible.
All right. So welcome, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh commissioners as well. Um, thank you for considering the project. Um, for Melissa and myself, um, this has been a situation that initially uh we were not in the the realm of thinking of. Um, uh, quite frankly, back in September of last year, the day after my birthday, I received a call eight o'clock in the morning of an emergency meeting um from our, at the time, owners out of Denmark. And the news was that our location in Granite Falls was going to be divested. And the future of the business was unknown. Uh, the future of approximately a hundred jobs and positions was unknown, and we were kind of left hanging in the balance. Um, so I am a uh born and raised Catawba County uh individual, raised here in in Claremont and um went to school at NC State in Charlotte. So I'm a North Carolina native. Um, and with Melissa uh being a resident here in Caldwell County and a and a staple in the area, um, we kind of looked at each other and said, you know, what are we going to do? And we, as we went through channels and the situation of of what could happen, tried to line up some potential uh suitors of the business and and owners of the business. We quickly realized that um more than likely what it was looking like was a foreign entity was going to once again own our our employment and our business. And that didn't set real well um with ourselves and and with our leadership. So we devised a plan and structured a management buyout. And we uh got busy with that activity. And before long, we were able to strike a deal, and we closed that deal in uh July of this year. So Melissa and myself are are the primary stakeholders of this management buyout. So we're proud to say now that uh Granite Falls Composites, formerly known as Roblon, formerly known as NEPCO for a long time, is now once again locally owned and operated. And in doing so, we've essentially uh had the same agenda as many of you guys of we've saved a hundred jobs.
Yeah.
And we are are doing our best to build a bright future for those jobs and and grow this business. Um, with the current Trump administration, we've got a lot of momentum and a lot of backing to protect ourselves from foreign competition, which is who uh is our our largest um competitor and and the force that we deal with on a daily basis. And uh the situation right now is is very good for us. We're positioned well. Um, we're the largest manufacturer of the products that we make for the fiber optic cable industry in the U.S. Um, so those positions and opportunities have opened up and allowed us to to have uh what looks to be a bright future. Um, so in doing so, it keeps our priorities set for uh not only our customers, but primarily for our employees. Um, and and we're just looking to uh move forward with you guys and and work to build our community and and build uh relationships with our continued community around us.
Yes, sir.
So.
Well, we certainly appreciate everything that you've done, and I I didn't want to cut you off if you.
That's okay. He's the he's the mouthpiece. He's a salesman, so I'll let him do his.
Well, he's done a great job, and I will say again that when we heard about all of this going on as a commission board, we had a couple of closed sessions. We were like, what can we do to help? Our EDC staff got involved, and and it's brought us all to this point today. And we're very proud of the fact that you guys were able to uh do the management buyout and keep those jobs in Caldwell County and and hopefully adding more as we're moving on. And that's what we're all striving for. And again, this board's worked really hard to make sure these things happen. And uh again, I'll just say it again, we don't get a lot of credit for that. And it's okay, uh, but we do, and we're working hard. And we appreciate your uh confidence in Caldwell County to uh to purchase this business and to stay here. And we're going to do everything in our power to help you make it.
Well, we we appreciate the support, and it's uh it's it's something that we feel like we've been called to do.
Yes, sir.
In particular with Melissa and myself, it's beyond just us. We we think that there's there's uh families at stake, and and that's what gets us up in the morning. That's what makes us work hard and and push forward for what we're doing. Um, and it's it's already had an impact in the industry. The outlook is is bright, and and um it it looks like uh we're we're positioned in a way that can be beneficial for for a lot of folks, and that's what we're there for. And we we just installed our new signage, so you've probably seen that on on three twenty-one now. We're getting a lot of uh positive response from that as well and and look to continue to do things to excite our people.
Very good.
To Chairman's point, I'm super excited for you guys as well. I know Melissa, and I think uh it's pretty cool to see you guys partner up and do what you're doing. And uh, you know, it's going to be interesting to see how you guys, this thing plays out for you. So we're super excited for you, and and again, thank you as well for your investment here in Caldwell County.
Thank you for the support.
Absolutely.
All right.
Always a believer, when uh businesses do well, Caldwell County does well. And so uh prime example, I live in Granite Falls, so I I see the sign and see your business. And yeah, it has gone through a lot of change.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm excited that uh that you're here, uh that we've got a great uh great process in place and an incentive here for you to to help help you along, to partner, partner with you. And that's what the county does. We partner with businesses because we know that when you do well, then our citizens do well. And that's what it's all about. It's not about any one of us. It's about helping our citizens and making this a better place to live, to raise your family, and to work. And so it's exciting. So congratulations. We're behind you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think there was a movie one time. I've been sitting here trying to think of the name of this movie where two people took over a factory that was being taken over by an overseas company, and they were going to shut it down, almost identical to your story. So, I can't think of it, but I remember the movie.
We'll make a new movie on there.
Yeah, we can make a new one out of it.
That's what I'm hoping for.
A remake.
And I'll say, too, we're very appreciative of Jesse and Ashley and EDC, and they've been with us from the get-go.
Yes, sir.
And very supportive of all of our actions and activities.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you, I'm proud of you for your courage, because it's easy to say that I'm going to do something till you've owned a business and you're on the other side of that fence trying to figure out how you're going to maintain. I can appreciate that very much, very, very much.
Thank you. Yeah, Melissa and I joked about it. We said that we felt like we'd been in a 15-round heavyweight fight to the end, but we got it across the finish line. That was our objective.
Very good.
MMA.
All right.
I'd just like to say congratulations on your new adventure.
Thank you.
Wishing you the best of luck.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with all of that, I'm going to declare the public hearing open and have Jesse to come and explain to us what we're doing as an incentive package for this group.
Again, this request is submitted under North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, which authorizes counties to offer performance-based economic development incentives in support of businesses' retention and job preservation. While new job creation often garners more attention, job retention is equally vital, especially when it involves longstanding employers who provide stable, full-time employment opportunities right here in our community. This project has been reviewed and recommended for approval by the Caldwell County Economic Development Advisory Committee. Granite Falls Composites is a pioneer in the application of fiberglass reinforced products. We all know that. They've been here since the 80s, and we look forward to keeping them here for a very, very long time. As they mentioned, in July of 2025, Jamie and Melissa successfully structured and completed a management buyout, marking the new chapter here for the Granite Falls location. Under the terms of this agreement, Granite Falls Composite has committed to retaining 70 full-time jobs at its facility located at 3908 Hickory Boulevard, North Carol... Hickory Boulevard, Granite Falls, North Carolina. To get the grant, these jobs must be retained for a full 12-month period in accordance with the county's established policy and must meet the county's definition of full-time employment, which is no less than 30 hours per week per employee. In recognition of this investment and potential growth, Caldwell County Economic Development Advisory Committee, along with staff, recommends that the county offer a performance-based grant of $1,000 per retained job for a total maximum incentive of $70,000. Again, these funds will only be awarded after a full one-year retention period has been completed and the employment has been verified through the Office of Economic Development. Additionally, Caldwell County Economic Development successfully or respectfully asked for consideration of a jobs creation incentive agreement between Caldwell County and Granite Falls Composites. This request is made pursuant, again, to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, which authorizes counties to offer performance-based economic development incentives to encourage private investment and job creation. Granite Falls Composite plans to expand its workforce and is committed to creating 30 new full-time jobs in Caldwell County by July 30th of 2026, while also retaining its current 70 full-time positions. These positions meet the Caldwell County's definition of full-time employment, at least 30 hours per week, and will directly benefit residents and their families within this community. In consideration of this investment and potential growth, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, along with staff, recommends the county consider a performance-based grant of $2,000 per new job up to a maximum of $60,000 for the new jobs created. Again, it is important to note, this is a reimbursement-style agreement. No upfront payment. No funds will be distributed unless all job creation and retention benchmarks are met in full. The company must also remain current on all county taxes and fees throughout the agreement period. I would like to... Any questions?
So, does anybody have any questions for Jesse?
And that, those funds will come out of the sales tax reinvestment, not County General Fund.
No, sir. No, sir.
And that's what that fund was set up for.
Yes, sir.
Exactly, exactly what we're talking about tonight.
All right. With that...
May I? I complicated Jesse's life a little bit on these agreements, and so, he described them correctly as two different types of grants. The proposal that I drafted for y'all's consideration that I think EDC agrees with, it's all in one agreement. And so, the only thing that I will clarify from his excellent presentation is that the requirement to keep any of the grants is that they've got to keep the 70 full-time jobs for the period in that agreement and those new jobs. They can obtain the old job grants within one year if those old jobs were retained, but they would also have to keep those old jobs plus the minimum of five new jobs from one year from that, such that it's really a two-year deal. They just can receive a partial payment a year into it. But they've still got to maintain all those, the old jobs and the new jobs throughout the two-year period, where all the money is called back, to be clear on that.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. All right. I'll declare the public hearing closed. We, again, didn't have anyone sign up to speak for that this evening, so with the declaration of closing the public hearing, it was the pleasure of the board in adopting this incentive this evening for Granite Falls Composites.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept as read by Jesse.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So, again, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you grow. And next is another economic development incentive, and that is Project... And you say that last word for me?
Pecanja. It is actually, I had to look this up. It is actually a cut of steak, if I'm not mistaken, but we have two gentlemen here with us today that are going to be happy to clarify that for us. We have Mr. Diogo Lobo and Mr. Laddie. Let's go on.
Pecanja.
Pecanja.
Pecanja. I'm learning. Welcome, gentlemen. It's good to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know if they want to say anything or if we're just launching in.
We just want to thank you for this opportunity. I mean, it's really steak.
Yes, sir.
From a supply. We look forward to work with the county.
All right.
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, pecan is our highest-selling item of that plant. It's a special cut on the hind quarter of the cattle. If you research, you'll see, but Wild Fork, it's very proud to produce that here.
Yes, sir. Very well. Thank you. So, I'll declare the public hearing open, and Jesse, you make your presentation.
Thank you, sir. So, this is our final presentation tonight. So, I know for everybody getting uncomfortable, we're almost ready to wrap up, I promise. So, Caldwell County Economic Development respectfully presents a tax grant agreement between Caldwell County and Project Pecanja, an agricultural manufacturer of prepackaged proteins with operations right here in Caldwell County. This agreement is submitted pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, which authorizes counties to offer performance-based economic development incentives to encourage capital investment, job creation, and growth in the local tax base. This project has been reviewed and recommended for approval by Caldwell County Economic Development Advisory Committee. Now, Project Pecanja is a leading global provider of diversified, high-quality food products, including a portfolio of well-organized brands and innovative, value-added, premium products. In the U.S., Project Pecanja is a leading producer of beef, pork, poultry, and prepared foods. The company has invested significantly right here in Caldwell County. Between 2020 and 2025, Project Pecanja has invested approximately $38 million in personal property valuation, so that goes directly to our roles right here in Caldwell County. Project Pecanja has communicated its intent to invest approximately $20 million more right here in Caldwell County. This investment includes a 55,000-square-foot expansion to their existing facility, the installation of new equipment and machinery. These improvements are expected to enhance production capacity and create an estimated 50-plus new jobs right here in Caldwell County. In recognition of this investment, the county proposes a performance-based tax grant equal to the following percentages of the ad valorem taxes paid by the company that are directly attributable to the improvements made between September 1st, 2025, and August 31st of 2027. Year one will be a 20% tax grant. Year two will be a 30% tax grant. Year three is equal to 40%. Years four and five will be your 50% tax grants. The company may elect to begin the five-year grant period in any tax year through the year of 2027. As with other economic agreements here in Caldwell County, this grant involves no upfront payments from the county. Again, these funds do not come out of the general fund. The county's financial obligations are limited to annual appropriations, and no commitment extends beyond the county's current fiscal year. This agreement does not constitute a pledge of the county's faith or credit. This is a performance-based agreement designed to incentivize real capital investment, growth in the county's tax base, and support continued development in a high-value sector of agricultural manufacturing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And this tax grant is just on the additional investment of the 20 million?
Well, the investment attributable to the increase in the tax burden on them. So, if they invest $20 million and it's valued, a tax value of, say, $10 million, it's only on that $10 million investment.
I got you.
Are you guys going to be running the place out there?
Yeah. That is the general manager. I'm the supply chain. But we're based here.
Commissioner Branch might want to buy some beef sometime.
No, I've eaten Wild Fork beef, and it's great. I mean, it's the best quality meat you'll ever find. I've eaten, they've got all kinds of meat, every kind you want, and it's top-notch.
And 100% of that meat is produced here in Lenore.
Yeah, and we are convincing the company to open a store here eventually, so it's coming.
That'd be awesome. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank you guys as the other businesses as well. I want to thank you for your investment here. You guys have been here for a while, and we appreciate all you do, and wish you the best of luck on this new endeavor here. So, good luck to you, and thank you again for your investment.
And I'll just echo that as well. So, if nothing else, I'll close the public hearing, as again, we didn't have anyone else signed up to speak this evening, and I'll ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this project as been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve this as being presented to us.
Project Pecanja.
Pecanja.
Mr. Chairman, let me add one more thing. Well, again, I complicated Jesse's life on this one as well.
You keep showing up with that.
The one thing I will add to what he said, the investment period is up until December 31 of 2027, so they've got until then to make whatever investment they're going to make on this project. Other than that, I don't have any amendment to that.
Okay.
All right. Very well. So, hearing that clarification, and we have a motion to adopt. Anyone else have a comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And again, thank you, gentlemen, for what you're doing for Caldwell County.
Thank you, gentlemen.
As important as you have. And thank you, Jesse.
Great job. Good job.
Thank you.
Any...
It's a mouthful.
It is. It is. And the complication was well worth the conversation, so thank you.
Ashley needs to be worried.
No, no, sir. Listen, you know, anytime economic development comes up and she's not standing here, people are like, where's Ash? I like, she'll be back, I promise. I promise. So, she's our head. She's our guide. She's our rock. So, she is a rock star. She's awesome. But to echo what you said, Commissioner, you guys do not get enough attention or thanks. Thank you, guys, for everything that you do for us, with us, and for this county. So, tonight, we did present two different types of grants that you guys worked through. So, new business, thank you. Existing businesses, we're growing, and that's directly attributable to your leadership, so thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other public announcements of, you got any projects coming up or...
Not that we can speak of at the moment.
Well, I didn't know.
We'll get there.
It seemed like you just had something for the homeowners' construction, something that was involved through EDC.
We did. We had a lunch and learn. We became part of the homeowners' association here in the Catawba Valley, Caldwell County region. We wanted to spur interest in Caldwell County, so what better way to do that is put Ashley in front of about 40 people and say, this is what we have going on
Right.
in Caldwell County and why you should build here. So, we're going to continue to educate and welcome people into North Carolina to help us get the housing that we so desperately need here in Caldwell County.
Yes, sir. We, again, appreciate that. Just didn't know if you had something else coming up.
Not at the moment we can announce, but thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you for being here, Jesse. That brings us to this evening's consent agenda. So, our interim manager, Mr. Wayne Rasch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll try to make this as brief as we can. Item number eight under consent is rollover of unspent hurricane mitigation funds at DSS. Just need to roll those into the new budget year. Items nine through 13 are acceptance of grant funds and agreement addendums for the Health Department for various things that they use to spend those funds on. Item number 14 is a rollover of grant funding into the new budget year for the Health Department as well. Item number 15 is a budget revision and closing statement for the Communications 911 Grant. As you gentlemen are aware, our scope of our project for our new communications center has changed, and so therefore, we have to remit some of those funds back to the 911 Board, folks. But we do plan to reapply. We've been encouraged to reapply for those funds for some project that we'll bring forward in the coming months for that particular communications center project. Item number 16 is a grievance of a borrowing resolution for a capital outlay loan for this current fiscal year. Item number 17 is the rollover of purchase orders that were still open from the last budget year, and those are for things that, you know, we weren't able to get, you know, where there'd be vehicles that just weren't available or different things that we weren't able to get the funds spent during the last year. So, it's not asking for any new funds. Just rollover those purchase orders into the current fiscal year. On item number 18 is the acceptance of SCIF funding from the state for an ambulance purchase, and those obviously not requiring any money from the county for that. Item number 19 is a not-to-exceed agreement with Southern Disaster Relief. Those are the folks who, the hurricane cleanup, and, you know, we had a not-to-exceed agreement. The final bill went just a little bit over what that not-to-exceed agreement was. Under FEMA regulations, we have to approve this to get, to make sure we stay in good graces there to, but it's not requiring more additional money to be spent just to approve that agreement. Item number 20 is a ratification of the Tri-County Speedway Special Event Use. As you know, under the current ordinance, there are permitted up to four special events a year. They requested that one of those events usages this year be for the special event they had recently at the racetrack with Dale Earnhardt Jr., Richard Petty, and country music artist Luke Combs, a wonderful event. I think they filmed a music video there that day, and so, that's a ratification for the Board for that event. Item number 21 is the reappointment of Dr. Wissam to the Board of Health. Items 22 and 23 are approval of minutes, July 14th and the July 18th special meeting that we had, and then, of course, the items we added tonight, the revision of the expenditure agreement for the OPRID fund for the new start date. Item 25, the acceptance of the grant funding for the Sheriff's Department from the Governor's Crime Commission, and then item number 26, the budget revision for the strap funding and carryover into the new year, and then finally, 27, those revised board meeting dates for the remainder of the year. And what that will be doing, just for the public's information, is changing to the fourth Monday night instead of the current second Monday night for every month except for November, December, and so that December will require to be the first Monday night. In December, we'll move November to the first Monday night as well, so that we don't conflict with the holidays at the end of the month, but every other month, we'll move to the last Monday night of each month, so.
All right.
That's what we have.
So, hearing the presentation of our interim manager, I hear a motion that we adopt this evening's consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the interim county manager has presented.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Does anybody have anything you'd like to say this evening? Well, again, we appreciate everyone being here and look forward to our next meeting and time that we can gather together again. So, with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this evening, and having made the motion, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and again, thank you for being here.